I'd like to call at order the Board of Supervisors for October 30th, 2018 afternoon session. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisors Frost, here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum. So, we had two items that were held from this morning. First item is item number 50. You are act-
You know what? Because he's- is David Cota here? Okay.
So, for item 50, you are acting as the Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento. Update to the Housing Authority Asset Repositioning Plan Strategy to allow for conversion of the public housing property portfolio to the rental assistance demonstration in Section 18 demolition and disposition programs and authorization to submit conversation applications to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Okay, LeChelle Dozier.
My name's Nicole Graham. I'm with CSG Advisors. We serve as the financial advisor-
I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Could you raise the podium? Help her draw where that is.
Okay. Oh, that's really fancy. Okay.
Try it again.
All right. Can everyone hear me okay?
You do need to speak up.
Okay.
There, that's much better.
There we go, all right. My name is Nicole Graham. I'm with CSG Advisors. We are financial advisor to the Housing Authority. We work with housing authorities across the country doing studies similar to the asset repositioning update that we've done for SHRA. We originally did this study in 2007, and what we're looking at now is an update to that analysis. There are- let me just ask, is someone turning the slides? LeChelle?
This slide.
Oh, is there? Am I supposed to do it? Great, thank you. So, there are several big issues facing public housing across the country. This is definitely not unique to Sacramento County and Sacramento City. First of all, the housing stock is aging. Much of it was built and inherited in the 40s and 50s and is also, you know, older as the 1970s. We have an aging housing stock, and we have a very big capital backlog. This is the need that has accumulated over time as funding has gone down over time, right? So, the federal government hasn't adequately funded public housing for at least the past 17 years, and as a result, I think we are all familiar with just a deteriorating public housing stock, and that is across the country. So, we've been looking for strategies to have sort of a long-term sustainability. In looking at the SHRA portfolio, what we- what our study included was looking at the physical condition of your existing housing stock, looking at the suitability of trying to approach those developments and address the backlog of need through different HUD programs, and to do that with available funding sources. So, the Housing Authority received some funds from the federal government. There are also other federal programs such as the tax credit program that we looked at combining to create a portfolio that would work and over a long time period be able to address all of the need. So, we also looked at the agency's three-years of operating budgets and really looked at opportunities to try and maximize revenue at both individual projects and across the portfolio. Our goal was to create efficiencies in the portfolio and, again, to identify a path forward that addresses all of the need at your agency. So, our proposal to stabilize the portfolio includes several prongs. The first part is we propose RAD conversion of your public housing portfolio that is comprised of buildings five units or more. And so, that would be done over a 12-year time period, and the 12-year time period is designed because it makes use of available funding sources without relying heavily on very competitive sources that frankly you might, you know, you might not get. That time period can be shortened to the extent we are successful in getting those competitive funding sources. The second item is to use another HUD program called Section 18 to convert scattered site units that are four units and fewer through that HUD program. Again, we're looking at tax credits as a key way of leveraging this program, and the 4% tax credit in particular is what we're relying upon because those are non-competitive dollars, to the extent where we're able to get the more competitive 9% credits that would make the project more feasible and allow you to complete it in a shorter time period. Again, the idea is to address the Housing Authority capital fund gaps over time and to be able to address the total need over this time period. Overall, we see a funding gap of about 24 million to convert over 2,200 units of city and county housing units, but this gap can be filled with capital funds that are generated over time as well as cash flow revenue from individual projects and, in some cases, cash essentially surpluses for projects in which our capital sources outweigh our capital costs. We're identifying efficiencies in operations in order to support mortgages on the properties, and in total, we're looking at leveraging over $149 million in deferred maintenance. So, that would be the program that all of this is intending to cover. The- I know that we've presented before on what the RAD program is, but here is a sort of a- at a glance, this shows the difference in annual revenue under the RAD program that we're proposing for the portfolio. Three-year historical revenue ends up being about $22 million, and with the proposed program, that would be a little bit higher at $23 million, so a $1 million net change. That change is primarily due to what are called tenant protection vouchers, and those are associated with the scattered site portfolio of four units- of buildings that are four units and fewer. Now, phasing, we have laid out a phasing plan for the conversion strategy, for the asset repositioning strategy, and the way we've approached that is to try to ensure that you're able to address the greatest number of units over the shortest amount of time. We're doing that by- the first priority here we have are the pilot properties that will be converted under RAD, and then the next properties are all designed to generate revenue first, to then address funding gaps that will be coming sort of further down the road. So, the idea is to bring in some money first, accumulate that with ongoing capital funds, and then finance projects over time. The guiding principles, so when this study was done in 2007, the following guiding principles were adopted. We recommend that as part of the 2018 study that the- those changes be adopted- adjusted slightly. So, one of those items that was adopted in 2007 related to how the reliance on federal funds, decreasing that reliance over time. We're simply pointing out here as a sort of an add-on that this strategy really does rely on conversion through the Section 8 platform, so that it is still a HUD program. The second item is that we had in 2007 identified a 30-year useful life as the goal. The RAD program is really set up to address a 20-year useful life, so we recommend that change. And then also, the smart growth principles was a key guiding principle in 2007. We think that can be maintained with a- just sort of a side note that this program really is a rehabilitation program, so that's the focus for this.
Would you- I'm sorry, would you please back up? Sure. Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am, sure. And this kind of refers to what you're walking through in this slide, but obviously the previous one where you showed the projects, and we had that presented to us a couple of weeks ago when this was rolled out. The question is, then, if you're looking for a 20-year life on the rehabilitation, I've been around long enough to know when some of these properties were brand-new and they did the ribbon cutting on them in the 80s, some may have preceded that, but that- so now we're 30, 35 years in, and again, I'm familiar with some of the properties are, you know, fairly well-maintained, others, you know, may have had the wear and tear of the years. So, why is it that if we're going to pull this money out, though, and I trust my- part of my question is, if it gets reinvested or it's pulled out of it, it goes right back into those projects? It doesn't go into some other fund that then- some other priorities on the list then somehow jump ahead or a need gets better? It has to go back into those properties, right?
That is what we're assuming. I think that's an excellent point, right? So, HUD will require, if you're pulling money out of any property, they will require that you identify- there are some restrictions on what that can be used for. So, certainly, it would need to be used for affordable housing purposes.
My point, Nicole, is that if you pull it out of a property that's newer, and some of these are already on the list for needing some rehab or ones that are classified as maybe that easier to achieve pilot with some greater need, that then the money ought to rightfully go back into those properties. And again, my next question will go back to the 20 years, but so- and maybe LeChelle, you can clarify, because again, you've briefed me on this, but where- or does the money get often- you've got 50-year-old properties that weren't necessarily a part of the RAD, but may have an even greater need, but either weren't easy to-
Right.
-underwrite initially or whatever?
So, as I understand, your question is, does the money kind of go from one property into a big pot that's used for other properties that may need it more, or does the money go from one property back into the second property?
Right, that is my question.
And really, it goes into a bigger pot that can be used for some of the successive needs for RAD on other properties. So, it's really more of a pooling-
That's right.
-of the funds, so that you can use the ones that need less attention but may throw off more revenue can help really support those that need more investment.
Okay, but how do you assure, then, though, that if you draw on that pool, I mean, there's an ongoing revenue source, but how do you assure that the money doesn't go into the pool, you put it in the properties that are more in need, but then these, you know, even with good normal maintenance and systems wear out, going to my point about 20 years, and so, how is it that you get assured that the ones you used to draw the mortgage off of, so to speak, don't- I'm not saying get neglected, that's not the right word, but so that they don't get the attention they need to maintain them to a higher standard, and that the money's there when those systems need to be upgraded? I guess that's-
Well, that's a part of the analysis of the physical needs assessment. So, we went through every single property and looked at the PNA, the physical needs assessment, to determine exactly what it would take to get them to the 20-year timeframe.
Right.
So, those properties that need less are still going to get to that same standard, so it's not like you totally skip over them. We are looking at them with the same lens to ensure that we don't leave some behind, is what I hear you saying.
Yeah, or that they get behind and then they never get caught up because they've been already mortgaged to help others move forward, yeah.
Right, and just to add to what LeChelle is saying, so in your current public housing operations, you don't have what we would consider a replacement reserve, right? So, a private apartment building, right, they're going to be budgeting for a replacement reserve. The public housing program doesn't really have that same type of thing, and so, that is a requirement, however, for the RAD program. So, there are two requirements that are really critical here. One is that we must, by HUD requirements, we must address what we see as the 20-year need. So, the physical needs assessments that LeChelle is mentioning, those are all incorporated into our analysis. Now, those analyses change over time, right?
Right.
The PNA changes over time, and we don't know what it will look like five years from now, but based on the information that we have now, right, we can see, okay, these engineers, this is what they thought was the 20-year need, and so, we will be addressing some portion of that upfront, right, and we will be building in an annual replacement reserve that will fund what, again, what this report believes is the need going forward.
Okay, so let me just follow on to that, then. And I don't want to get too much detail, but I just want to understand that with some of the newer properties, say, coming forward, certainly from the mid-'80s, but in the '90s and 2000s that are on our inventory, you know, we actually, via some of the publicarians, working with the agency and working with, in some cases, those that were builders and so forth, you know, both what the building codes call for, but also did some upgrades, again, recognizing they were still- had the affordability index, but we did. We put roofs that had a longer life expectancy than 20 years, or we put in, you know, the Title 24 requirements, you know, a lot of those don't go bad unless you have to replace windows or whatever. So, there's the physical part of that, but then there's, you know, maintaining it, just making sure that you do the cosmetics, the repaint, the refresh, if sidewalks, you know, or trees need to be replaced. Some of that's normal maintenance, but also, if you're going to do a refresh, and the agency certainly has good history in all this, that can be a pretty big price tag, and it may come around once every 20 years or maybe less often than that, maybe once every 30 years. I just- I think as we look at this, and I think it's a good idea, very frankly, and I think it's, you know, a smart way to leverage our assets and provide, you know, good, decent quality, affordable housing, but also, I just want to be sure that, not unlike other programs, I'm not saying any that are affiliated with the county or with the agency, but where, you know, you put the mortgage out there and then the funds get, you know, redirected, and then you're left with the properties that actually stood up so you could do the work you wanted to do, and then they begin to deteriorate, and you don't have the funds because, one, you've taken the money out of it, there's still cash flow, I get it, but then the other ones, you know, you're still struggling to meet the bigger list. So, I get the sense that, you know, that's all going to be part of the plan, and when you come back to us with this, you'll come back with that plan that will kind of outline, so we'll have that very clearly stated to us.
Absolutely. What's included in attachment is our best guess in terms of where we are now, but as we submit them by these specific groupings, then we come back before you each and every time, so that then we can walk through that level of detail, so you know exactly what is going to be improved on those properties, and you can see, you know, all of the actual improvements that are going to occur.
And I just think memorialize it for success, because we're talking about a program that will have a long tail to it, and so, you know, somebody 25 or 30 years from now, assuming this is still, you know, the approach we're using, that they'll know not only what was intended, what we- bases upon which we made the decisions, but also the commitments that were made going forward, so. Okay, thanks.
Go ahead.
Okay. Let's see. All right. Residents' rights. So, the RAD program is very much intended to protect existing public housing residents and really provide them with all of the rights that they currently have. So, the RAD program has, you know, I won't read the slide, but essentially, residents are protected. They have the right to return. They won't be, you know, pushed out. They continue to have the right, even though they're moving essentially from the public housing funding platform to a Section 8 funding platform, they continue to be viewed and sort of treated from a policy perspective very similarly to the way they were under the public housing program. So, the amount of household income that goes to their rent, the ability to increase rents over time, these are all things that were built into the program to protect residents. Another, you know, really key protection under the RAD program is that, under Section 8, generally, there's a, at most, a 20-year contract. And so, when folks were talking about the RAD program and, you know, figuring out how to move public housing to Section 8, there was this concern about what happens after 20 years, right? This is why we're required to address the 20-year need, but under RAD, the 20-year program, the 20-year contract is renewed in perpetuity, and so, those residents do have that protection. They are very similar to public housing. It is a permanent subsidy essentially for the unit itself. There's resident consultation rights, a resident advisory board, various notices. Residents must be notified that there will be a RAD conversion, and there are a lot of provisions essentially for bringing the residents into the consultation process. The next steps are to, you know, approve this recommendation to allow us to convert the public housing properties through the RAD and Section 18 HUD programs. Step two is to outreach to residents and begin submitting conversion applications to HUD. And step three is to return back here for final consideration of each conversion project.
Does that complete your presentation?
And that completes my presentation.
Any questions for the speaker? Okay. Look for a motion.
Second.
No further comments, please vote.
Item 51, approval of the 2019 one-year action plan for the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnerships Program, and Emergency Solutions Grant-funded projects and programs, amendment of prior year's action plans, amendment to the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency budget, amendment to the Citizen Participation Plan, authorize the award and execution of a five-year Consolidated Plan Consultant Contract, approval of release of home regulatory agreements, and other related actions.
Ms. Evans, could you help her lower the podium, please?
Is there a- oh. I don't know if it goes any lower, but, ah, there we go. Thank you.
There you go, now we can see you. You could introduce yourself before you start your presentation.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I do have a PowerPoint presentation. Celia Inigaz, Program Manager with Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. I will quickly go through the brief presentation. So, this afternoon is the action plan for 2019. Just as an overall, the framework comes from the Consolidated Plan, which is usually a five-year period. It has been extended to two years, but from that, we identify goals and objectives, and then as part of the action plan, we identify projects for approval. This includes four funding sources, Community Development Block Grant funding, as well as Housing for Persons with AIDS, Emergency Solutions Grant, and home funds as well. I'm going to just quickly just touch upon a couple of the accomplishments in next week's budget presentation, you'll hear more, but these are just two projects, park projects, Old Florent Town and Bellevue Park Improvements. We also fund an extensive amount of- fund public services. That includes senior services for Meals on Wheels, homeless services, as well as home repair programs for residents. Just going to focus a bit on our proposed projects in the capital improvement program and highlight these important projects that primarily have come out of our department, your Department of Transportation Public Works. The first is the LED streetlights in District 2. This is a Phase 2 of Phase 1. This additional phase will install 18 additional lights. The current Phase 1 is- has 46 lights. Yay. Another- and this area is north of Florent Road between 65th and Power Inn. The second is also near Florent- is south of Florent Road between Stockton Boulevard and Power Inn, and in this second phase of two phases, 64 additional lights adding to the recent 48 that have been installed. The third streetlight project is Rosemont, around the Rosemont, in the Rosemont Park area. It is around the Sequoia Elementary School. This phase is the second phase, funding the second phase of 90 lights. The first phase is 45, so again, making some significant improvements and making way for lighting, safety, and walkability for these neighborhoods. The last two is- the second one, the second of the last two is the Rosemont Community Park and the Cordova Recreation District, and this is the first of two phases to install pedestrian walkways, which will be ADA accessible. And the last project is the Bing Kong Tong Historic Rehabilitation. These funds will go towards design and rehabilitation of this historic building in Isleton.
I'm sorry, could you back up? Where is that building?
It's on Main Street, in Isleton. It's on the down-
In Isleton.
Yes, in Isleton, yes. Then, our continuing projects with CDBG and our other sources, we have home repair, our emergency repair program that we administer, other programs through- for homeowners, for seniors, and for low and moderate income through rebuilding together. We, of course, provide funding for multifamily. We provide through the ESG Rapid Rehousing Funds, as well as funds for emergency shelters. And then we also are part of other jurisdictions which provide funding for fair housing activities, which includes the Renters' Helpline, which is- we fund through Sacramento Self-Help Housing- We of course provide funding for multifamily. We provide through the ESG Rapid Rehousing Funds, as well as funds for emergency shelters. And then we also are part of other jurisdictions which provide funding for fair housing activities, which includes the Renters' Helpline, which is, we fund through Sacramento, Self-Help Housing, and Legal Services of Northern California. So we will continue all these in 2019. As I mentioned, we are in the close of the current Consolidated Plan. So in preparation for that, we must complete an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. So that is in process. Since 2017, we've been working with a consultant, as well as fourteen other jurisdictions, gathering information about that. Currently, we have just, they've just completed multiple stakeholder meetings and they are winding up the resident survey, which will complete, be completed by the end of November. This information will result in a draft early next year and completion in September of 2019. Most of this information will then feed into the Consolidated Plan. We're currently in the selection process for that, and we hope to initiate that in the next four to six weeks. This is critical to develop the Consolidated Plan. This will include much consultation with, of course, the county through developing the scope and the schedule, as well as through the process where we develop the goals and objectives that result in an action plan and an annual basis. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
I don't see any questions. Oh, sorry, now I do. Mr. Serna?
Okay. There we go. Quick question about propositions one and two on the statewide ballot. Well, if those measures pass, will they have any bearing on any of this activity that's being presented today?
It depends on how quickly the state will start to get resources out to the communities. What we see normally in a proposition, it does take them some time, but if that is the case, we would, it would be used for our multifamily and it'd be another layer of funding on top of the types of funding that Celia was talking about, that we could use for affordable housing purposes.
Is it prudent to consider a report back to the Board of Supervisors should those propositions pass? A dedicated update in a public hearing setting about what that really means for Sacramento County? One of them is the restoration of a significant amount of bond proceeds for a whole host of housing programs, including farmworker housing. So I, for one, would be very interested in having something scheduled in the first quarter of 2019 should those propositions pass, so that this board is armed understanding the full breadth of resource availability for affordable housing and also in our efforts to deal with the homeless challenge here in Sacramento County.
No, I think that's an excellent idea. We'll get something on the calendar probably early, early in the quarter.
Great, thank you.
Just to follow up, is there, isn't there money there for veterans' housing as well?
Yes.
And so I think that's an important component, and I know that conversations just generally with folks that, you know, with some available properties out at Mather and what we might do with some of the current structure out there to complement that. So I think it's something that, you know, get back to us early, I would agree. Thanks.
Right. In addition, there is other funding that the state has appropriated that we do need to come back and talk about in terms of Senate Bill Two. That's other state funding for affordable housing that we haven't had a conversation in terms of how that money will flow to the county and be used for affordable housing. So we could wrap all of those things in together.
That'd be great.
Good.
Any further questions?
Let's see if there's anybody speak, I'll remove the recommended action.
Second.
Vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, I want to try again on off agenda speaker, because is David Cota here now?
Yes.
Just so you know, that's the third time I called you today.
Yes, persistence paid off.
Thank you. Let me see what was the buttons you pushed, you're up?
We can hear you anyway.
Okay, all right. Hi, I'm the Chair and Board. My name is David Cota, I'm an electrician for the County of Sacramento. I employed for Regional Sand out at Sacramento Regional Waste Water Treatment Plant. And here to talk about the negotiations that have gone on between Sierra Building Trades and the County of Sacramento. And it just hasn't gone well for us, and I'm here to ask you guys to intervene on our behalf. Let me ask you a question first. Did you guys get an email that I sent to you?
Yes, we got it.
Okay, so you've read that then. So, yeah, we are having, in my opinion, a retention problem, and there are greener pastures for us to go elsewhere. There's thirty-two, thirty-three percent disparity in wages between what I make as electrician, doing the work I do at the County of Sacramento, at Regional Sand, as compared to what the gentlemen that have left and making elsewhere, even more, it's for the city of Roseville. And the negotiations with Vanessa, and I don't realize she, Vanessa De Leon, she's your Labor Relations Officer, has dealt with us. And Robert Bonner's her superior. They gave us an offer at the beginning, and it was the same at the end. And so that, in my opinion, was not negotiating in, you know, in good faith. And so, yeah, it's, the work we do, we feel is, should be deserving of more of a wage. And asking you to intervene on our behalf, let me see, a couple of points I had. In the past, it has gone to, well, we went to mediation, and it's gone to fact-finding in the past. And in the past, the fact-finding did find in our favor that we should receive a, they did the class study, and they found that we should receive a pay raise, but it was not binding. And so, the Labor Relations Officer said, well, that's nice, that it's in your favor, but it's not binding, we don't care, this is what you get. So it's very discouraging, especially when I work for Regional Sand. Probacher and Ruben Rubliss have both talked to me personally and said that we would like to get you a raise, to get you guys caught up, but you work for the County of Sacramento, you did not work for Regional Sand. So their hands are tied.
Could you wind up your comments, please?
Pardon?
Could you wind up your comments, your, past your time?
Okay, thank you. So, it's just, I realize it's an eleventh-hour plea on our behalf to ask you to, if you can intervene and say something to the Labor Relations Officer. Because we do vote next Tuesday, November sixth. I realize that's the vote, but it's also our Sierra Buildings Trades vote as well, whether we accept or don't accept the original offer that was given to us. And so, yeah, that's just a.
Thank you. As you know, it's not on the agenda, so we can't comment on it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I just ask you to consider what I've said, you've got the email, which says a lot. And my information, phone numbers are there, if you want to call me, please feel free to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Next item, please.
Item fifty-two is the Workshop on Agricultural Leases in the Kiefer Landfill Bufferlands.
Thank you, Chair Peters, members of the board. My name is Dave Garridelli with the Waste Management and Recycling Department. Ninety days ago, we came and gave a brief presentation, basically a tour of the Kiefer Bufferlands in the Slough House area. Slough House, a small agricultural community that has hosted Kiefer Landfill for many decades. Supervisor Natoli, I understand you're very familiar with the personalities and the properties there. I appreciate the time of the other supervisors to let us introduce you to that community. We have a number of leases that have gone or are poised to go into holdover status, and we are looking for criteria for how to lease the properties in the future. It is of keen interest to the department to maintain stable relations with our neighbors there. There is a long and storied history with the community of Slough House. What we took from that workshop three months ago was to go back to the Kasumnes CPAC and hold a workshop there. I have been party to many CPAC meetings. This was perhaps one of the best, most productive ones. We had a good meeting, lot of good questions, lot of good impact, input. What I have for you in a brief slide presentation, as opposed to taking you on another tour around the Bufferlands, is what we heard. There we go. What I have done is do my best to take all the input we got from both, you know, at the CPAC meeting, as well as in some other stakeholder meetings held with both tenants and neighbors, and tried to consolidate it and categorize it. What I'd like to do is just talk you through the headers and put it basically into five categories, four specific and then one general. I won't go into each bullet point, but if you have any questions along the way, please stop me and I'll elaborate and go into some detail. First, reputation. That was very important to the community members there, someone who has demonstrated some stability within the community there and experience both farming in the area and leasing from the county. Agricultural practices. The underlined item there is one issue that we're still working on, fire protection plan. We've had a history of not knowing exactly who's going to cut the fire breaks. We have managed to cobble it along, and it's been a point where we've been able to build productive relationships, but we think that the RFP should, and the lease should clarify that. Number of bullet items there. Community impact, that we should have as part of the procurement process, not just what the bid is, what the amount per acre is, but demonstrate that this will not be disruptive to the community of Slough House. The community of Slough House has hosted, again, Kiefer Landfill for many decades, and the Department of Waste Management has a keen interest in not disrupting it anymore. Conservation, consistency with habitat. There are a lot of habitat initiatives and a lot of practices that are going on. We have to walk a fine line, often, as waste managers. We're actually kind of used to that, so it enables us to speak a little bit of the same language with a lot of the folks there. How to make the land productive and economically viable while also protecting habitat. When it boils down to it, the guys there are the pros already. Finally, there are some additional concerns that didn't exactly fit into any of the categories. Broader perspective, ten-year term, which is what we initially suggested, is agreeable to the folks in the community, but most importantly, they're interested in the ability to renew contracts. As long as everybody is happy with the arrangement, why not create the ability to just renew? This, I think, also fits in with the spirit of the negative declaration for the original purchase of the Bufferlands, which was to lease to the members of the community that were already farming there. Secondly, the three percent elevator, which is standard in county leases. Agriculture does not necessarily operate according to the CPI. You have a good year, you have a bad year. Productivity goes up and down. Commodity prices in the agricultural sector don't follow that linear path. So some other consideration for that. There was expressed the interest in having third-party manager of the property. Staff does not think that is particularly the best path at this point, but certainly opening that up for future consideration as well. Concern about the creek. Deer Creek, because of development upstream in Folsom and in the county, and in the Rancho Cordova areas that are being developed, every time you build a parking lot, that water travels faster and more unpredictably, and the creek rises faster and more unpredictably. This is a concern. The Department of Waste Management has worked diligently to work with our neighbors to manage that. I think we do a much better job now at maintaining the creek and being responsive to maintenance of the levy. I will let members of the community speak on their behalf, that is my perspective as a DWMR employee. That is an issue, and we just need to make sure that there is a clear plan for managing that. Lastly, there were concerns raised about the use of most modern engines available for the agricultural practices.
Okay, Mr. Serna has a question.
Please.
Thank you. So on that last point, I understand, I think, the spirit of that bullet point, acquired modern engines, farm vehicles, but was there, has there been any thought given to how we might actually assist our partners managing these lands to take advantage of various incentives so that we can minimize cost to them in terms of modernizing their fleets of trucks or tractors, including looking at how to expedite and assist with processing of Carl Moyer assistance, those types of things?
We have not considered that yet, primarily because the two agricultural leases where this would be most impactful. There are two types of leases that we have in the Bufferlands. There's the grazing leases, and then there's the row crop leases down in the valley. Both of the leases in the valley are in holdover status. So we have not explored that, but it is a very good point, and I think it should be considered for any future leases down there.
Yeah, not to play favorites with a widely understood and known program that is intended to assist all kinds of parties that have fleets of trucks and other heavy equipment, but I think when it comes to expressing an intent to assist our partners, in particular, when it comes to advancing the objectives of what these Bufferlands are intended to do, I think it's absolutely incumbent upon us and maybe through our local air quality management district to really educate folks, make available to our partners various incentive programs so that we can actually help them achieve, you know, the broader objective of minimizing emissions, even outside of the context of this. But this is a great reminder of how we might be able to kind of avail ourselves collectively to make that happen.
I think department staff would be wholeheartedly behind that.
Great, thanks.
Next steps. What we are prepared to do is to take this community input and put it in the form of an RFP, which would be a little bit more elaborate than most county leasing RFPs in other contexts. But this relationship between the Department of Waste Management and Recycling and the community of Slough House is unique, and it deserves very special attention. And we're prepared at this point to go ahead and take these and turn them into criteria for an RFP. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Natoli.
Yeah, thank you, Dave, and certainly thanks to Doug Sloan as well, and certainly others in the department for their work on this. I had the opportunity to attend the Kasumnes CPAC meeting, which the discussion was held, and I wasn't there for your report back a few days ago, but nonetheless, I think, as you characterized it, was very productive. We heard from, you know, longtime generational families, we heard from others who have been there more recently, but certainly I think you have a pretty good summation of the input you received. A couple of comments I wanted to make, and certainly want to hear from folks that are here in the audience on any of the points you've put into bullets, but I just want to make it very clear, and it was in the staff report, but this isn't really a fund center, you know, as it relates to solid waste and recycling. And we do have a unique relationship. We've acquired over four thousand acres over the last fifty-plus years, and both the rangeland and the cropland, and we're, you know, we are certainly a very integral part of the heart of the Slough House Valley. And I think that in addition to the leases and criteria, as I said at the hearing you had in July, and I appreciate that you got back here in ninety days.
Ninety-eight, I think.
How many?
Almost.
Almost nine. Close enough, very good. And certainly appreciate that. I wanted to say, though, I think somewhere, though, beyond the leases, there needs to be embedded, and I use my word from back in July, but memorializing not only through the leases, which are a good way, because they establish the current practices and recognize the history, but I think that there needs to be some sort of a policy document that accompanies this item or subsequent item to this board that outlines for the future, certainly what the, not only what the intent is, but what the practice is and why it is. Because, again, I could see twenty years from now, yeah, we got leases, but they're on, you know, under this current situation, they're on the second holdover or whatever. But somebody says, well, you know, maybe things have changed and we need more money from this, we got to maximize our leases, and whatever you agreed to then, that was then, now is now. And obviously, we don't bind through our. and obviously we don't bind through our actions relative to the financing piece of it, but certainly from a policy framework and recognizing the history, and I think it's important because, you know, some of the folks that have spoken here and over the years have really, I think, you know, stressed, you know, improving the relationship and recognizing that we're there, they're there, some of them were there long before we were there, not necessarily as a county, but certainly as a, you know, Kiefer Landfill and all the associated operations. So I guess what I'd like to see in addition to this is that, and maybe this is for Nav and Mike and Doug, some framework that would, you know, make a clear policy statement relative to, and then obviously the criteria and leases follow from that, and I think, and we have good practice, and again, I just think it's important to memorialize that because if we don't, it may get lost, not that it wouldn't, you know, that this wouldn't be a part of the overall record, and so I'm going to encourage that, and as much as I certainly compliment the work here, I think that still needs to be a part of all this. And I would, lastly, again, as we give some direction on the criteria, just to the last point, I appreciate the supervisor Serna's comments, I think we ought to look at, rather than requiring, we ought to incentivize, you know, if it's going to be equipment upgrades and so forth, recognizing that farming operations, they want to have, you know, best available equipment and, you know, best available practices, but, you know, that's driven by, obviously, some of the economics and the constraints of marketplace and, you know, climate and whatever else it might be, so. But I think you've captured, in essence, you know, and I don't see a lot of conflicts in the criteria. There's some things that might be a little contrary if you put them in a lease, but I think if you do an RFP that, you know, encompasses, I think, that local flavor and certainly, you know, the commitment to, you know, continuing in the cropland status and as well as the rangeland, that those are both complementary to the landfill, they achieve the buffer lands piece of, but they also maintain, I think, a very longstanding commitment over the last 25 years by this board, by the department, and certainly in working in consultation with the community and those landowners, whether they're leaseholders or not, that have a very deep concern about, you know, the long-term legacy for the Slough House community there and the ability for those businesses to prosper and to do what they do in agriculture. So, you know, I'm pleased with what you bring us, and I don't know if you need specific direction around the criteria, but maybe if you want more feedback, we ought to hear from folks first, Madam Chair, and then we can go from there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think those are all our comments, but we do have a couple of public speakers. Jan James, Rick, then Rick Grimshaw, and then Eduardo Gomez.
I'm Jan James. I, like you, am a landowner in Slough House, and I rent to the people who, we have common leaseholders. I've never required an RFP. They just bring the check and we shake hands and we go for another year. So the whole process of even doing an RFP, you need to understand, is totally foreign to farmers. If you'd been in Slough House this last weekend, you would see the best of what makes that little community work. We had people picking pumpkins and riding on farm tractors, on the trailers, out in the corn maze and doing all kinds of fun things. People picking vegetables, buying vegetables. It was really great. It's something I'm really happy to be part of, and I think the county could be a good part of that, too, if we continue on the process that we're doing right now. So thank you for hanging in there. I don't think any of us ever thought it was going to take this long to get this done, but if we can get it done right, it'll be really worthwhile for everybody in the county. So thank you. Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you, Jan.
Rick Grimshaw.
Hello, my name is Rick Grimshaw. I'm one of the owners of Davis Ranch in Slough House, and I'm here today to represent Davis Ranch. In late July, I stood before this board, pleaded our case for special consideration of our lease terms with the county. In late September, I stood before CPAC panel to reiterate that same sentiment. Since the last time I was here, nothing has changed in our plea to the board. We desperately need to have our lease that is renewable to continue on with the farming operation, whether it be for 10 years, five years, or year-to-year. The ability to have the first choice to automatically renew it is paramount to us. If we were to lose our lease and control of the properties owned by the county, our operation would lose about 98 acres of prime bottom ground needed to sustain our operations, but also cut the operation in two, the center of it is where the county sits, and forcing us to travel up and down Jackson Highway on one of the most historically deadliest accident areas there is. I cannot understate the importance of holding on to all these properties that we currently rent for our continued existence. And once again, I want to remind the board that landowners who had their property seized when it was decided to create a buffer zone were promised nothing would change in Slough House by doing so. What we are asking here today is not anything unusual from what happens every year from the other landlords that we have. And one other thing is the 3% increase year-over-year that Dave talked about. Anyway, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Grimshaw. Eduardo Gomez.
I think I'm good.
Oh, okay. All right. Man a few words.
Thank you.
Okay. This is a workshop, so this requires no votes. Mr. Natoli, you made several comments. Did you have some more you wanted to cover?
Yeah, just briefly, after we heard from folks, I just would say that, because I didn't speak to the specific criteria, and I'm not going to go through it bullet by bullet, but I do think that the creativity in the structure of the leases relates to my point about not being a fund to center, obviously, these are, you know, county assets, and we have some obligation to the, obviously, to the county fisc and certainly to, you know, to all of the ratepayers and such, but I think that being creative and recognizing the stewardship of the land, and if we achieve some of those things, working with partners that, you know, live and work the land there, then I think we're all better served, and I think the practices that we want to see continue out there, to Jan's point about this last weekend, but that go on, you know, day in, day out with farming activities and various related aspects of that. And it is, it's on a very busy highway, it has, you know, obviously, it's the gateway to the foothills, it's the gateway to Sacramento, and here you have this, you know, treasure place that people, you know, work very hard at maintaining and producing the food and fiber that they do from the lands there, both county lands as well as privately held lands, and so I think, you know, the essence of any lease or RFP ought to embody that, recognizing that, you know, there's some history here that is unique, it's a relationship that's unique, and again, I guess I would just ask that in structuring this, that, I mentioned this in my briefing yesterday, I think it might be wise, this is a workshop, to, before we actually issue that RFP, I don't trust that there's going to be any fatal flaws in it, but maybe at least we, this board could see that, so we know how you put this criteria into a request for proposal that you're then going to go out to, you know, current leaseholders, as well as, I guess, if the criteria apply, there might be others who will be able to compete for that. That's the intent behind the process, and we hear from Mr. Grimshaw and others, the importance of maintaining some stability and continuity and how they do it in the private sector, they do it with a handshake and, you know, pay what was agreed upon. Here we have it embodied in documents that will be pages and pages. That's just the way we do contracts in the county, and so I guess I would suggest that maybe, and not to belabor the point, nor putting more time on this, but that maybe coming back with a statement that kind of memorializes what the intent is behind it, and then with the RFP to allow us to take a look at that before it actually goes out on the street. That's my comments.
Okay. I don't see anyone else with comments. Is that sufficient for your purposes?
Is it all right to get a little, just a little bit of clarification?
Sure.
I'd like to confirm in what form you want to see, one, the statement, so that I understand what that is, so we can be responsive to that, and two, in what form does this board want to see the RFP? Just again, so that we can get clarity, because we don't...
Yeah. Well, I'll just respond. My thought would be that if you've got all this criteria and you've now boiled it down, you've got this request that has X, Y, and Z, there are stipulations in here, and then the typical things that require, you know, whatever, some indemnification or whatever that is, that's, you know, kind of standard part of a business operation, but to see how that goes, because again, if, you know, if it's all of those things, maybe it begins to cut out of the picture some of the folks who might be there now, or, you know, it may be too restrictive or not, and so, again, I think you've had the good input, but, and I don't see a lot of contrarian, you know, criteria there, but I just think, see how that syncs up, I guess, Mike. So, you know, if you have an RFP that's pretty much ready to go, I guess, or if you have it in a draft form, maybe a little bit out of the ordinary, but, you know, I think it's just extraordinary circumstances, so we could see that, and I don't, it may not generate very much discussion, but I think it's noticed to everybody we've been working with as partners, here's what we intend to go out with. If there's something there you see as being a fatal flaw, not in the competitive process, but in actually being able to compete.
Understood. Okay. So there's not really a statement involved. What you'd like to see is you'd like to see the RFP?
Yeah.
The form of it. Okay, cool. I just wanted to be very specific so we could be responsive to that, and that item would be brought back for the board as an information item?
Let's go and delay it again.
Well, we'll have to do it quickly. I mean, these guys are pretty...
It'll take a little while to do it, but that's...
But you got to, but you put it together. I was just, like, schedule for...
And we do have time, we do have time in the schedule, because it, from a seasonal perspective, if you saw in the board letter, the intent is to, is to have this implemented in January of 2020, given that the sequencing of the seasons and a number of things that have affected this, so if the...
I think what I'm curious is that, is the intent of the board for us to bring you an RFP and for you to review it and give us comments if that RFP is correct, or is the intent for us to shop the RFP before we present it with the community? Because those are two different actions, and that's going to add some time. I just want to be realistic, right, Mike?
Yeah, I mean, we don't usually look at RFPs, and that was, the point of this workshop was to get the issues on the table. I don't know why we'd, I mean, personally, why we'd need to see it again.
I think I just, when I summed up, you know, the reason I would say that, I would think it'd be to have eyes, if you want to, you know, shop the RFP and figure that, you know, it keeps the playing field competitive, but I just said there's some criteria here that folks, you know, how you structure what your financial capability is. Well, a farmer may have a dime in his pocket, a lot of sweat to go behind it, and a tractor that runs, and he, you know, and he may be out there today, but if we're going to acquire, you know, you know, a bond of $100,000, I'm not saying this, I mean, to be exaggerative, but, so that does have meaning to the process here, because, you know, typically, somebody's going to say, well, you know, you got to have, if you got to have financial backing, and, you know, you got to have, you know, something in the bank or whatever. I don't know that that's an important criteria. If, you know, if you're a cattle rancher or a farmer and you, you know, you know how to do it, and you can make a go of it, and you can meet your commitment to the county, then that may be good enough. And so that's, that's kind of what I was getting at, Madam Chair. I wasn't trying to parse this so that we were going to spend, go through a line-by-line in RFP, but, you know, we are going to look at an extended period of time. We may, I don't know if you're going to agree with, you're going to have no rent elevator in here. You haven't told me you're going to do that. You say that's what the community said, you heard from Mr. Grimshaw, but I don't know whether you've had sufficient direction to say that there's no elevator in there, or there might be some elevator, I mean, relative to...
But if they go out and work with the community and come up with a consensus plan, I...
Okay, well, again, I'm fine if you're going to go out and work with the community to get a consensus, but the consensus right now is basically the criteria, but I'm okay with working with the community.
I think the reason we're asking the question, we want to be very clear on this. We don't want to get in a situation that we further delay this.
No, I'm not.
If the concern is, I think we have the community input, and we're going to take that in consideration as we prepare the RFP, to the essence of what I'm hearing is, are we going to use criteria that would be harmful to prospective folks that are going to respond to it? I mean, that's, I'm looking behind me at the department, and I think we, we have the knowledge and the expertise of what we require.
These are non-standard leases, I guess I would say, at least to some degree. That's my, kind of my point.
That's true, but I do believe, I'm looking at Doug and Dave back there behind me, that you guys do have the crit...
We can craft these expressions of community interest into an RFP that I think will keep everybody in Slough House satisfied.
Okay. Can't do much better than that, I guess, if you think you can do that, so I'm fine with that. That's, Madam Chair, I mean, I'm comfortable.
All right.
Why don't we, I think the difficulty I'm having is that if we come back with what the criteria, we understand that these are non-routine items, and I do believe that commitment that Dave and the department is making is that they understand the unique circumstances behind it. Are we going to come up with something that everybody likes? I think Dave's right, he's going to try to do that, but at the end, it is a competitive process, and I think stating the obvious is that there are going to be folks that are competing against each other.
There'll be some competition potentially.
And there are folks in that competition, somebody might not get what they want. I just want to make sure we're not misleading the board to think that we're going to set up a process where everybody ends up winning in this. That's what my sensitivity was. Well, what I would offer is that we will set the RFP out. What we could do is send it as an informational item so that you know that we've sent the RFP out and what the criteria is. That way, if you're getting questions, you're getting whatever information you're getting, you at least have a document that you can refer back to.
Or you could circulate a draft.
Yes, we can cer, we could certainly circulate the document that we would be using, and further, there is a, there is a final check with this, that any of these lease agreements would be approved by the board ultimately.
Oh, I know, I know that, but that's, you know, if we're going to be to the point, we'll be way down the road at that point in time, so hopefully...
No, I mean, when we send this out, we'll send it out to the board member so you have what we sent out.
Okay. And so, if I could, Madam Chair, just one other thing. Back to my statement, though, I think there needs to be at some juncture, you know, an action by this board that memorializes what it is, that, you know, the important values of the construct, not only of the range we have with solid waste and our, you know, folks that leased the land, but about what's important there and, you know, why we will continue to, you know, move in a fashion that, you know, hopefully is compatible with that, and so I just think, you know, recognizing the agricultural construct, things that have been said here today, but I think that needs to be memorialized. I, you know, I said it in July.
What I will offer on that is that when we do bring, there's a couple of steps in this. First is we got to go through the RFP. When we're bringing leases back, that could be an event where we memorialize everything that we've been talking about, so that way it's in our record going forward.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so more to come for all those that have been down here, and if I could just ask you, so what's your timeframe? Since we didn't prolong it with any action here, what's the next step?
The timeframe is that at this point, at the, just about the first of November, the existing leases will go over into one-year holdover status, so there is no crisis, there is no rush, while everybody is okay with that situation for one more year. We have time. We will put together RFP. I think we can do that within 60 days or so.
Okay, so you'll, after the first of the year?
After the first of the year.
Okay. Thank you all.
Okay, next item. We're switching order here, I think.
Yes, Madam Chair, we'll go to item 54. This is the Hillsdale project, this, excuse me, the BPRCO at Hillsdale project, a use permit, special development permit, a design review for a property located at 5751 Hillsdale Boulevard in the North Highlands community. The, I don't have an environmental document listed in the title.
It's exempt.
I'm told it's exempt.
Hello?
Good afternoon, members of the board. Leanne Loffet, your county planning director, and I do have a PowerPoint presentation on Thank you very much. So the item here is located at 5751 Hillsdale Boulevard. That's the northwest corner of Hillsdale and Walaruga in the North Highlands community. This particular component of the item, this item is the use permit, special development permit, and design review. I will also be giving you a separate presentation on a request for alcohol PCN. This is the layout of the site, and on the lower right-hand corner of this is the view of the buildings, the new convenience store and gas station area that will be built. This is the site plan here. I did want to stop for a minute and point out a few things on this site plan. The, they are, the existing building is located more in the center of the site. They are going to push the building back to the upper-left corner here. This corner is situated in a larger shopping center which surrounds it, surrounds the site. There are currently three entrances, actually four entrances into the site off of Hillsdale and Walaruga, and this plan would close one of those entrances, which is on the lower left. See if I can get my cursor to work here. So this entrance over here will be closed off and replaced with landscaping. In addition, this parcel was created outside of a normal parcel creation process, and so they had to come in with a certificate of compliance, because a prior shopping center owner had sort of created, pulled a parcel... owner had sort of created, pulled a parcel number, sold it off outside of the parcel, normal parcelization process. So, there was no, there's no cross-access agreements between this site and the adjacent shopping center. And therefore, the site plan does propose, and they are not able to negotiate cross-access agreements with the current shopping center owner. So, the proposal here is to close off those accesses into the shopping center and replace them with landscaping. So, that would be the access here on the right-hand side of the building and here on the lower-left-hand side of the building.
So, the only access points to the site will be from Hillsdale and Walaruga?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, again, I already mentioned, this is a use permit to redevelop an existing gas station and 24-hour convenience store and replace the older 1,500-square-foot building with a new 3,180-square-foot convenience store. That's pretty much a standard BP ARCO template that they have for their stores. There's a special development permit to deviate from landscaping standards, essentially based on the parcelization and the layout. There's no way to really get to the 20% of landscaping and still meet other code requirements, including parking. So, we've added, worked with them to add as much landscaping as we can, but the site simply isn't big enough as an existing parcel to get to the 20% landscaping. And there's also a design review to conform to the countywide design guidelines. The existing gas station does not have a use permit. It precedes the use permit requirements, and therefore, the redevelopment of the site is triggering this use permit. I already mentioned the special development permit around the landscaping and the driveways essentially going from a total of six, internal and external, down to three, all external. The neighboring shopping center manager or representative has raised some concerns, and there was some correspondence submitted to the board yesterday with some of those concerns, and already mentioned that there's no reciprocal parking and access agreement. That comment, did comment something about the sign not meeting the standards, and I did wanna point out that the sign does meet the zoning code standards. And that analysis is in the attached planning commission report. The North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council reviewed this in September of 2017, and they recommended approval of the use permit on a four-to-zero basis. There was no one in attendance at the CPAC meetings, and the member's comments were generally positive about improvements to the site. Their concerns were focused on security, and this does not entirely match their recommendation on the sale of alcohol, which we will get to in the subsequent presentation. The planning commission considered this in July of 2018 and recommended approval. The member comments were generally positive about improvements to the site. They had some questions about security, and I did wanna note, unlike what the slide says there, there was a representative of the shopping center in attendance at the planning commission. So, there were no neighbors, but there was a shopping center rep there. Staff is recommending approval of the use permit and that the board make the following recommendations listed there on the slide. I'm not gonna read them all. I did wanna point out a couple of key conditions so that you understand what you're approving. So, I'm looking at attachment two of the board report, which is the findings and the conditions. I specifically wanted to point out condition number four. It addresses this issue of the lack of the cross-parking access, and it does actually provide some flexibility, so I wanted the board members to know that, such that if the owner of the BP ARCO was able to negotiate cross-access agreement with a shopping center, there is some flexibility there to open up one or more of those drive aisles. Right now, we understand they are not able to negotiate that, so our expectation is that they will install the landscaping, but there is some flexibility in that condition.
I have a question about that, that's...
Yes.
So, currently, with the driveway that goes into the shopping center, people do drive on the shopping center property?
Yes.
But we're closing that off?
We are closing that off, assuming they cannot get a reciprocal access, parking access.
Okay. Well, that, and then there was a comment on a letter that said that the gas pump queuing can impact circulation internally, which spills onto the public streets.
We have, this has been through the full review, including before project review committee, and with, including transportation reviewing this, and they have not identified any concerns. They have conditions in here from transportation, but they are not, staff, including DOT, is not concerned about negative impacts on Walaruga or...
Okay, so then, the gas refill trucks, when they come on the site, they're able to get in and out with all the radiuses, turning radiuses necessary?
Yes.
To move around?
Yes, they are, especially with the building being pushed back to the left. Yes.
Okay. I'm confused by these comments, but I'll take you at your word. Mr. Serna has a comment?
Yeah, thank you. So, this seems like it's somewhat of an unusual canvas to work with in terms of the site layout, only because you're, if I, if I'm correct, I'm looking at this current aerial, you're working with kind of an L-shaped area for, I assume, pedestrian access to parking and landscaping on two sides of the site. And I can't tell what kind of trees, they might be pine trees or something, but, and it looks like those, that's gonna, that's gonna remain. Again, I'm looking at your site plan. My question is, was there, was there a standard SEPTED assessment applied to this, given kind of the unusual nature of having mature landscape in back of the station slash convenience store that backs onto the rest of the supermarket or the shopping center? And number two, is there going to be lighting in that area where the landscaping is expected to remain?
Yes, I was pointing out some, let me point out some of the rest of the conditions, and then we'll see whether that gets to all of the questions that you just asked or not. So, I did want to point out condition, let me get to my notes here. Let me start with condition five. That's on a, one parking space has to be for EV. That's not what your question was about, but I did wanna point them out in order. Condition number six is the SEPTED landscaping condition, but that's really more about planting species out near the roadway that will keep the homeless from finding that being a desirable camping area. So, that SEPTED design is in, a bit in condition six.
But that's only applicable to the corner, correct?
It's really applicable to any plant species on their site, and when you look at this, you can tell that their building is gonna be pushed all the way, most of the way to the upper...
That's, that's kind of my concern, right? Is that now you're gonna have a, an edifice back up against mature landscaping. Maybe I'm wrong in assuming that that landscaping is gonna stay as mature, whatever, evergreens, and you're gonna replant something that's gonna be lower in height, or it's gonna have a narrower canopy, and therefore, there's not gonna be that kind of opportunity for folks to hang out and do whatever they do back there. But that was the reason for my second question, specifically about a condition for lighting back there.
Yeah. So, I mean, we, we will be looking at the, and I think we have looked at the trees that they have proposed, and the landscaping they proposed, to make sure it does follow SEPTED.
Okay. So, so the replacement, the landscaping's going to be replaced?
The replacement landscaping will meet SEPTED requirements, and that is required in six, and we will follow that up with our landscape review process and our landscape design person to look at that.
And that would include, at that point, making a determination for the need for lighting?
And then the lighting, in condition 12, we reference standards identified in the zoning code section, and we didn't repeat all of those. But because the board has had so many questions about lighting and security in these convenient market locations, you may not recall, but we have added more than a page of standards in the zoning code that apply to all convenience markets. And so, we referred to those in condition 12. And those include, in the zoning code, project lighting levels, light fixtures having to be vandal-resistant, management being responsible for the removal of litter from adjacent property and streets, store windows being unobstructed, building security, including raised cashier stations so that there can be monitoring of the area, buzzers on the doors of any cold boxes, the cashier station being visible from the parking lot, so there's reverse, and so, two-way mirrors, so the whole bunch of those are now embedded in the zoning code and applied to all. So, we referenced that.
And then, and I'll just end with this, that, I mean, the, the express reason why I'm so interested in the kind of public safety aspect of the design, the site design, and I know you're gonna get to it in the next item, is the fact that this building now would essentially be between the corner and another liquor store. And so, now you, now you put a, a building where folks can, you know, be out of view from both streets if they want, with, you know, more than ready access to, to liquor, beer, wine, what have you. So, something to consider.
Yeah, so I think those were...
Were those all the conditions, special conditions you wanted to call out?
Condition 13, I wanted to point out, is also some additional safety measures. You can't have a recycling center, and, you know, you can't have benches that are easy for the homeless beyond, all that kind of stuff. Those items that have come up before in the past. And then, condition 52, having to do with healthy foods. That was another one I wanted to point out. So, those were, those were the conditions I wanted to...
Yeah, a couple more questions here. So, I, I had other questions. On the, the back of the building, that would be, that isn't north, but the, where, the face the shopping center, the side and the...
Yes.
So, that is, yeah, that portion?
Right.
Has lights. Do the cameras look at that?
There are quite a number of security cameras that are proposed. I'm not sure, standing here, I can tell you exactly where all the security cameras are. They are addressed in the, the next item, but they are, we do, we have looked at the security cameras as part of this, and it is a requirement.
Okay. And is that, are those two walls blank?
Um, let me go back to the facade that we have here. I mean, there is some color deviation there on the lower right.
Well, does the area have trouble with graffiti? I mean, we have required several gas stations that have walls like this to put a mural in on it, and that's, that's what I'm wondering about here.
Got it. I'm not sure that we explored a mural in this location.
What about vine growth?
Pardon?
Vine growth? You know, something that, some vegetation that creeps up the...
Oh, yeah, but they die.
As long as they're maintained, it's hard to spray paint that.
Yeah, it's as long as, well, I'm gonna ask the applicant about that. I assume they're going to be coming up.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Natale, do you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, where you have the site plan up there, this goes back to closure of the driveway that's currently functioning in the current configuration into the shopping center. So, if, if nothing was done, now this issue's been raised, is that, is there a threat of closing that driveway, or, you know, the current arrangement allows for that? And, you know, very frankly, I, I get it that if you don't have rights and you can't, you can't obtain them, then you're restricted, but to have everybody have to access off of Allegra or Hillsdale and not be able to enter the center should they choose, from a circulation standpoint, you just, again, we've had this conversation multiple occasions over the years, you know, it's almost idiotic that you have to force people out to the public street in order to get right next door to whatever commercial enterprise or enterprise it is. And so, I guess I'm, my, my question to you, LeAnn, is that if nothing were done, obviously, that's not what's before, that's not the request, then that driveway would continue to function as it is? Or is that, now, now it's in dispute, and so, they could...
Yeah, it's in dispute, so I think the county wouldn't be involved. That would really be between the two property owners, but that is why staff left some flexibility in the condition four that I pointed out, because you are right, from staff's perspective, if we were dealing with a blank slate or this was being parceled off, we wouldn't necessarily wanna force everybody to go out onto Hillsdale.
No, we wouldn't want to. We necessarily wouldn't want to, I don't think.
Yeah, we'd wanna be able to see people to go back and forth, but, but because there is this lack of agreement, and the shopping center owner is making extremely clear that they have no intention, the current owner has no intention of granting reciprocal access, then that's why this design came up with the added landscaping.
Could I just ask a question, then? So, this station was built in 1974, or the community plan was in 74, I don't know when the station was built, but did the station go before the center, or the center went in before the station, do you know?
I don't know. My guess is that the center went in first because of how it was parceled off, but I, I can't speak to it.
Or, because that was, I didn't capture that in your historical background on this, about, you know, what went first, but...
I can answer.
Again, you know, if that comes to pass, if we approve this plan and that access is cut off, it's, you know, it's just, you know, another one in a series of, you know, bad oversights that we can't do anything about now, but that over the years, how we didn't get joint access, I don't care if those guys were competing as a part of, you know, it just doesn't make sense. It didn't make sense then, and it makes even less sense now, so...
Right. I mean, if it was coming in with a parcel map, we would have required, but...
Sure we would.
They sold it off without going through the parcel map process.
Yes, thanks. Go ahead.
Any other questions for LeAnn? Did you have anything further?
I don't.
Okay. Is the owner here?
We do have an applicant representative, yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I need to take their oath.
Okay, would you raise your right hand?
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So, help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I swear.
And please state your name for the record and the statement. I have been sworn.
Good afternoon. My name is Margaret Trujillo. I'm with Seven Multi-Site Solutions.
And you have been sworn?
Yes, ma'am.
You need to say those words.
Oh, and I have been sworn?
There we go.
Thank you. And I'm here, I represent BP.
Okay.
And I'm Craig Shaver with PM Design Group, and I have been sworn, and I'm here representing BP as well.
Okay. So, there are a couple of questions to ask about cameras and the back walls, the blank back walls?
Yeah.
And the easement.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for your time, and we really appreciate the work that staff has done with us over the time to help us get here today. So, the first question, in terms of the negotiation with the shopping center, BP has done a lot of work to do everything we can to negotiate cross-access easements, and we will continue to do so. And that's why we appreciate the flexibility of the language in condition four, so, just because we haven't been able to yet, doesn't mean we'll not keep trying.
Yeah.
And then, in terms of the lighting and landscape, Mr. Serna, we're totally aligned on the same goals as you have in terms of making sure that there's sufficient lighting, especially behind the building, and appropriate landscape. And then, in regards to your question about the mural, we're, we're open to doing, you know, whatever on the back of the building, that we can work with staff on ideas of a mural or whatever you find is appropriate.
Okay, well, and how about cameras on those...
And yes, so, the last point, in terms of the cameras at the rear, we, we do have plans to make sure that we have full coverage of the site and building and cooperate with all law enforcement to access them as they need it.
Okay. And the, the length you keep, the video and all that, is, is that in the liquor license request?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure if it's to that level, but we can work with staff to...
It's part of the sheriff's letter?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, I would like to request that you put a mural on those blank walls. We've done that several other times in, in the area, and it really, knock on wood, seems to work, 'cause I haven't had any problems with it. So, and I, I'm sure LeAnn may be able to get you the names of some of the people that did this work in the past, or maybe you have somebody that you...
Yeah, we'd be open to any local artists or names, and it'd be a pleasure.
It's a nice addition for the neighborhood also, and, and it does seem to keep the graffiti away, so...
If I may, also, the evergreen trees that are behind the building, they are actually on the shopping center property. They're, they're quite large, so they would have to be trimmed up a bit to, to be able to view that mural, but I'm sure we can work with the...
Okay.
...to do that.
All right. Thank you for that. Any other questions? Well, with those conditions, additions that we discussed, I would move for approval of this application.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Item 53 is the ARCO AMPM Hillsdale and Walegra PCN ABC License Hearing to determine whether public convenience would be served by issuing a Type 20 liquor license to ARCO AMPM at 5751 Hillsdale Boulevard in the North Highlands Foothill Farms Community.
Thank you very much. This is the same site, the same building, now that we've dealt with the fact that we have a convenience store, we have the question in front of you as to whether they should be able to sell alcohol at that store. I do have a separate PowerPoint here, and I was given, when we get done with this PowerPoint, I was given an exhibit of where the cameras are, so I can show you that as well, which is not actually in the PowerPoint. All right, so the same site, this is an ABC License Hearing to determine whether public convenience and necessity would be served by issuance of a Type 20 liquor license. Type 20 is beer and wine only, not full alcohol. This is a graphic that shows both the census tract and a one-mile radius of other liquor licenses. There are a fair number of liquor licenses in the area. There are plenty of places to buy liquor here. In fact, there is a liquor store and a Los Superior grocery store in the shame shopping center to already buy alcohol.
Do you know what time those stores close?
I do not. I do not know. And I actually don't even know if their licenses are old enough to have all the single sales conditions or not. We do understand, it's not in your board report, but we have asked some questions as to whether this will be a transfer of a license, and so, our understanding is that the applicant will be seeking to do a transfer within the census district. If they are unable to acquire a license within this census district, they will go outside of the census district to look for one, and their last preference would be to have to seek to acquire a new license. So, they are going to be trying to find a license to transfer to this location within the census district, but I cannot assure you that that is what's going to happen.
Ms. Serna?
So, I just want to make sure I understand that. So, does that mean that their first priority is to make sure that there's not going to be an increase in Type 20s in the immediate vicinity?
That is what they are going to seek to do, but that is not a condition, so I cannot guarantee that that is what's going to happen.
Have we ever conditioned that?
Not to my knowledge. I don't, I don't know that we can. I haven't explored that before. I think it is somewhat difficult to get new licenses, that's why obviously their priority is to see if they can acquire one. The need for the PCN is triggered because the site is both over-concentrated and high crime. The census tract allows for three off-site liquor licenses before triggering a PCN hearing. Approval of this one would result in six off-site liquor licenses in the census district. In a one-mile radius, there are 18 establishments, 10 are Type 20 and eight are 21s. So, the North Highlands Foothill Farms CPAC did have a split vote, two to two, which constitutes a denial. The CPAC members felt that the immediate area had crime and vagrancy problems, and the alcohol would exacerbate that. The CPAC members, members in support, agreed that the area had issues, but they were concerned that simply denying the request would result in the improvements not necessarily happening, and that that wouldn't be a net benefit. We do have, all of the typical conditions from the sheriff are listed in your board report, as well as the conditions that we apply to the business license, all the security camera conditions, those are all listed in there, and therefore, the sheriff did their typical standard, which is they protest the granting of the PCN unless conditions are added, which essentially constitutes their agreement to the license. So, staff is actually recommending approval. This was a close call, was more complex, and admittedly, there are a fair number of licenses in the area, but we felt that because we had a use permit going to the board where we could apply all the conditions, and we were going to get major improvements at the site, that is really why we ended up erring on the side of, or going with the side of recommending approval.
I'd like to talk about the type of license, tracking button back to your original comment, that they don't have a license yet. So, is what you're saying is they could get a license, purchase a license that has hard liquor?
No.
Okay.
They are only requesting beer and wine, and that is all your board would be addressing to the states, so they could not move to a 21 without coming back through this full process.
Okay. And they can apply for a new one, or they can purchase one from an existing business or a closed business? Those are the ways you get that kind of license?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Serna?
So, you mentioned, Leanne, that this is a very, a close one for staff. Is it, what's that comment based on? Is it based on the fact that you have a two-two split on CPAC? Is it, okay.
Yes. We do try to really pay attention to what the CPAC recommends, that's always a big factor for us, and also, there is other locations, but again, we felt with the use permit, we had the ability to apply a whole lot of conditions and a whole lot of address security, and also have improvements to the site, and we did want to see those improvements move forward.
So, I know this is, I'm asking you to, with this question that I'm going to ask here in a minute, to chime in somewhat rhetorically or anecdotally, but how often do we grant with the sheriff's conditions the ability to exercise their Type 20 license when, outside of a mile, in this case, we're talking about a matter of feet to a liquor store? In fact, with the changes that are being proposed, the store's moving closer to the liquor store. So, is that an unusual situation?
Not necessarily, no. We certainly have recommended approval. In fact, I would say, most PCNs that make it all the way to the board are often for approval. What typically happens is more problematic locations or more problematic requests fall by the way before they make it to the board, so that a lot of times, by the time we get to the board, we are recommending denial because we've worked out the issues. You know, if someone looks like the sheriff is really going to have a major problem, or staff, or the CPAC, a lot of times, they don't move forward with their full application, and they don't get to the board.
That shopping center has been problematic over the past few years, and there are a lot of calls for code enforcement, and for the sheriff, and although recently, I don't know who initiated it, one of the tenants, the smoke shop, left, and that seems to have made quite a bit of difference. They sold gang paraphernalia and other things that attracted kids and vagrants and such things. So, hopefully, the shopping center owner is on the way to trying to clean the center up in the way of crime, without going into a long dissertation on the crime in the area and where it is and what's causing it, which you don't need to hear for this. I guess I'm in the, well, with a couple of other things. One, there are a lot of liquor licenses here because that's where a lot of people live, and that's, so that's where the liquor licenses show up, but also, I, so I can say it in public, I really want to see planning come back to us with some standards for issuing liquor licenses. It's very uneven, and I don't think it's fair to the residents or the applicants, so they need to understand the conditions by which the board will approve or, you know, disapprove a liquor license. It's, we started on this several years ago and didn't finish it, and there's a lot of information there, and so, I think if we took a little different viewpoint on it, we could probably get something through here in a reasonable amount of time. So, I would like to hear back from planning in, I'd say, 90 days, or understand why not, because it's hard for me to sit here and say, this is okay, and then have an application that's similar in another area with all the conditions being the same, high crime, lots of liquor licenses, that sort of thing, and they get a no. So, it just needs to be easier for everyone to understand why, including us. I don't always get the impression that staff is real firm on some of these things, so it's tough. So, that being said, I think the gas stations, I think BP is a good user of the facility. They have cameras, they have security, and all of that will help out the shopping center with their crime problems, I think, and so, I'm going to move for approval.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 55 are your nominations. You are continuing to December 11th, the Cemetery Advisory Commission, Children's Coalition, Consumnis Area Community Planning Advisory Council, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Consumnis, County Service Area 4C, Delta, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, Paratransit, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. For your matters today, you have Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to December 4th.
Cardova Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue December 4th for District 3.
Okay, Supervisor Frost.
I don't know why your microphone isn't working today.
I nominate Christopher Stahl.
Okay, and Supervisor Natoli?
I'm going to hold mine until next week.
Okay.
Please.
Human Services Coordinating Council.
Please continue to November 6th.
Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board.
Chief's recommend Amber Hill to the non-specified parent member, and continue the remainder to December 11th.
Mission Oaks Recreation and Park District.
Please continue to November 6th.
Sacramento County Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Chief's recommend Sue Schoolly and Jack Worston to the advisory committee.
And Sacramento County Youth Commission, Supervisor Kennedy.
Oh, I didn't realize flow. Continue to December 11th.
Supervisor Peters.
Please nominate Luke Delkor.
And Supervisor Frost.
Please nominate Arthi Shridhar.
Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, Supervisor Kennedy.
Please continue December 11th.
I do have a note here that the chiefs, I'm not sure if it matches with yours, that there was a recommendation to appoint Stephen Carlson? No? Okay. We'll continue that to November the 6th. Veterans Advisory Commission, Mr. Natoli?
Hold that till next week as well.
That concludes your nominations.
Is there any other business?
No, not from the clerk.
Go County Executive comments?
No comments.
Board member comments, anyone?
Very quickly, Madam Chair.
Mr. Natoli?
I just wanted to, we had the warrant notices on Items 68 and 69, which are the closure of the Sears store in the Florin Town Shopping Center, and I know that we obviously, economic development follows that in Supervisor Kennedy's district, but my point on this is that, over the years, we put a lot of money into the Florin Town Center, you know, by via working with both the SHRA and with the developer that constructed the Walmart store and some of the other stores that are, you know, occupy a portion of the property. Sears was in holding that, you know, was certainly tied to that center. I guess I would just hope that, as we look at that, certainly working with the supervisor of the district, that economic development looks at the opportunities there, because we have 85 plus or minus employees, obviously, they'll be seeking jobs elsewhere in retail or wherever else, you know, somewhere in automotive portion of it. But, again, I know that at the time, probably more than decade, probably 20, almost 20 years ago now, Sears made a commitment to, you know, upgrade their property there and did, you know, some work. It certainly has aged in place, and I would just, you know, want to stress that there's a significant public improvement that went in to do, I think, a sewer lift station and some other aspects that really don't show themselves above ground, but I would hopefully position, you know, working with the developer, whoever they may be in the future, to see if there's an ability to bring that, you know, property back to full utilization. Thanks.
Okay, I have an adjournment, I don't know if anyone else does. I would like to adjourn in memory of former county assessor, Ken Steiger. We lost a dedicated public servant with the passing of Ken Steiger, who had a 30-year career at the assessor's office, culminating with serving as our county assessor from 1999 to 2011. He was a native of Sacramento, a former active 2030 Man of the Year, served as president of Fairy Tale Town, as well as president of the Alumni Association for Sac State, where he earned a master's degree. I remember receiving his briefing reports on the county's assessed valuations over the years, and he was also businesslike and had a reputation for fairness, and he got real excited when assessments went up on valuations. I'd like the board to recognize his service to this county and adjourn in the memory of former county assessor, Ken Steiger.
Madam Chair, could I just, I typically don't chime in on these, but Ken was the first county employee I met when I came to Folsom.
Oh, really?
And, yeah, he came out to talk about what the county did for Folsom on the appraisal side, and he was very impressive. You can say that when this recruitment came in for the COO, I actually was swayed because of my work with Ken, so.
Oh, my gosh.
That's what started this journey for me.
That's interesting to know.
It was a very nice service for him on Friday. It was actually his birthday, they had the service, it was, to the day, it would have been his, I think, 69th birthday, and, but it was, you know, a lot of community members, and as you said in your comments, not just business community, but friends, and he very active in so many aspects of the community, and I know certainly many county employees were there as well, that he was, you know, well-respected in the office and certainly in the county quarters.
Okay, if there's no other business, we're going to adjourn in the memory of former county assessor, Ken Steiger.